December thirtieth, regular meeting. Motion to approve the extended agenda.
Motion to second anything to add, uncle?
Uh, no.
I didn't say.
Public input.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the record, my name is Chad Brannon, so I want to here with Fieldstone Lighters Arms. I was hoping that I could maybe present a couple of things to the board this evening as it relates to a proposed um wetland ordinance that's coming before. I think the planning board tomorrow night. Um, my hope is to offer some, some understanding about what that ordinance could. Um, resulting as it relates to some of the commercial industrial properties in town and I've been asked to come here this evening by a few of my clients. Um, to represent, you know, how the wetlands ordinance in general, I think the, you know, a setback for a potter from their letting. Um, did not a bad thing for a community to consider, but there's a number of ways that it can be considered that's more productive to. Um, development and growth and um primarily that in most communities are handling that regulation through a conditional use permit process. Rather than through a buffer, a non disturbance buffer. Uh, seventy-five foot non disturbance buffer would be a pretty significant. Really almost land kicking on a, on a number of properties in town and you know, the town of Swansea has a lot of. Low value, um forested wetlands, um some of which have actually been, you know, altered over time. Um, and there's really no distinction in the, in the uh current proposal. It doesn't address, you know, what about existing developments? It, it's, it's very onerous on. Um, existing processes as well as certainly of future development and so we have been working.
Will you open it up?
What's your preference, gentlemen? What do we want to read though? We have the board's meeting with their representative to the planning board in a little while, he's not here yet. Might make worse, I'm still waiting till it gets to everyone.
I'm happy to wait if that's.
Might be shortly after six o'clock or so.
That would be fine.
Hope we got too far.
Well, reconvene, thank you.
Joe Russo.
Good evening. From the driveway request on Christian Hill Road. This new truck, metal new truck, since metal are contracted, this is the last meeting we had and um. They're not gonna be here, cause I don't see a reason for them to be here, but they, the contractor representing the new truck. Has uh indicated that they would be willing to extend the paved portion of Christian Hill Road approximately hundred feet. And uh they would be willing to offer it to the town in form of easement. Uh, so power trucks will turn around. So essentially these just extending and maintaining the road another hundred feet. This would eliminate, there having to be any issue with the private, uh contract for the private property owner maintaining the road. I looked at it, I met with the contractor and I think it'd be the best circumstances uh as, as far as. Eliminating that issue of having somebody maintaining the town road and for issuing the driveway permitable and bringing it before the boards. Mentally, um I could pass a plan around, I trained them not to do a design yet, just in case it wasn't approved and wanna wanna see them spend any money on it. But this is just a tax map where the contract was created, a diagram which kind of shows that uh the page will be extended. Road section will be seventy feet and then it'll be, it'll be essentially a hundred feet to give the turn around the area. And then I explained it would require a formal easement filed with the registry of deeds. So that way there if there was ever a change in property owner, we still would have an ability to turn the power trucks around up there. I'm up to, I sorry, so. Pretty straightforward, eventually you break up the thing, obviously you have to be formally to turn around power car. Right now I just went down there and. Property owners haven't really given you two with the turning around, they, they possibly do it.
That's your driver before that, you turn around and right.
Yeah, yeah. They seem to be as well, I think, but the world construction will have to ask them a five, thirty, sixty thousand dollars to complete. Um, but allow them to have their driveway access and then. Except, except for your dwelling in your initial location where they wanted, so I think it's. It's a good compromise for everyone.
Gonna be the same with the, the road that exists that you can follow that way through, yeah, so they are gonna widen that.
Yes.
And this new driveway that they put in, is it gonna impact drainage?
No, it's gonna be a whole, they'll have no. In their driveway essentially, so just give us a formal easement to the driveway, the turning around.
Make it with the solution, man. You know, good.
Good job, Joe, thank you.
That's all I have. So you can stay the rest of the meeting. Is that what that is?
Yeah, moving forward, I'll type up a memo explaining that the two thousand more accepted will be those circumstances and um move forward.
Hey, just like you said, you said mental weather hell too, and that was interesting, have you guys seen it lately? Do you see how the layers eliminated, it's pretty cool, huh? That's a lot. It's a lot more than I expected, right? It's only crashing over there. I mean, it's, it's time consuming, that, that, that job that's from here to the window and they gotta put the layer only eleven inches compacted from the next one. All the way up there, I, I found it unbelievable. But um.
Good project.
Yeah, it's a big one.
And the weather hasn't been good for them, just yesterday in fact, they were breathing while they're trying to move down. Only got two piles done yesterday, they've been shooting for four, four to five. Today they had three done by eleven o'clock and they were going for another three, so it was a pretty productive day today.
Yeah, the here that they got is just hot water and boses and they show it all over the bags, you know, maybe they have sit ads.
Or both bagged weight. Seventy pounds of beef on this area from the truck replaced by an animal or whatever.
At least basically you took the Pennsylvania.
I feel it's more weather. Actually, hopefully, thank you.
Next one, thank you. Sure you don't wanna stay, Joe?
I am good.
Alright, you're welcome.
Yes. So our contract was what was eminent assessing and there's been Mary's office assessing for general assessing. Uh, the revaluation, yeah, the revaluation uh last year. Has expired, um initially I was leaning towards it's might be time to go out to bid, it's been I think eight or nine years between the two. Form of the company, but checking with my colleagues, there, there really aren't a lot of options, but major players are. Avatar, municipal resources and I think from what I've heard, they're not really taking on new clients, I think one Swansea size would be challenging. Um, so the assessing coordinator and I, that was Dave Marisaw today to discuss some of our areas we'd like to see. Um, kind of improve, so my recommendation would be to, to move forward with a one-year general assessing contract, see if we can get some of those. Improvements, communication, not value type things, not value issues necessarily, just in terms of administrative items, so they will work dedicated time. Um, from the assessor in the office that we can advertise and let people know, totally be there to answer questions. Um, so that would be a high recommendation at this point. Pending the proposal, which I haven't gotten, or I haven't got any point of view.
Are they willing to entertain the one-year extension?
I think so.
And so what are the, what are the types of challenges you're, you're hoping to overcome with, in this one year?
Yeah, like I said, mainly primary, mainly improving the timeliness of communication, so Chris is asking me about this exemption application. My media systems with just getting a prompt answer the first time versus having to send a reminder and then something else comes up. Gets lost track of, so I think she's done an excellent job, not letting things get to a point where it is a problem, but. Um, and if she wasn't as diligent as she was, I think things might have been falling through the cracks. So that would be the main thing is just to follow up with that, and having people call and say, hey, I called the number and I haven't heard that. Maybe you need to give them a call and say, you heard that call?
What, what was the explanation for the delays?
Well, I guess there wasn't necessarily one, we're trying to focus on having the other member of the team on their partnership. Be the point person for us. So that, it was better when that was the case and then that's been a little inconsistent at times, so it's been inconsistent in communication.
This is why I intended to state that I met the assessment guy, right? And he does have another person that works with him, right? And we wanna do an extension for a year with them, right? And you just wanna see improvement on communication, right? Got it?
There aren't many choices.
No, I think you would, would be selected, we went away from vision and selected down with here and I think that was one of the companies that bid. He was based in Woodsville or Ayr, whatever. Yeah, so um.
Did we, I've contracted him for so many years.
We did, we had, I think it was a five-year contract and then. They basically, all the assessing is in five-year cycles, cause you have to do the reassessment every five years, so normally you go on a five-year cycle.
So we're just gonna start doing that, we're gonna go with an extension of one year, right?
Just the general assessing, so there's a general assessing and then last, our revaluation last year was what's called a statistical update, which is basically they. Visit sale properties and places that have been improved, you know, they don't look perfect, but they're not trying to visit necessarily every property, which is lower cost. But if you don't do that, if you don't do the visits, eventually your data is gonna be not as good. So usually you try to, try to alter it, so our next one would be a full measure list where we try to do a portion of the town each year to spread over the. Well, we have three years and then do map update before a year.
How's that work? Would, would, would values change? Or this is for statistical information?
That will be, update the physical data, but the, but the full update of the tables every day was still happening the last year. So if they found out we can put on a shed, you know, garage that you didn't get a Honda for, you did pick that and get.
How did you know? Right out there in the old, they've been to your house. Right. They, they've worked well for us just in general.
Yeah.
It's been a good relationship.
You need a motion for that?
I think not at this point because um I'll bring back the contract when we get it approved, so. Just consensus to mount to our.
Contracted IT services.
So this is the annual um contract that we have with Twin Bridge Services, I think normally I just. Signed because it's not a long-term commitment, it's more or less status quo, but um where this one's, there's the fact that it's changing, which I mentioned in the memo. Uh, when we, so we had two, I think, servers in the town, it was two total, an email server and then a file server. A year and a half ago or so, we retired email server, now we have the web-based mail, but I think it's working much better than the old version. People aren't able to wait and work on their phones in different countries. Um, but part of that process, it's getting accounts really pointed out, three sixty-five for all those um. Email accounts, which requires an annual subscription. So the annual subscription was in the initial um project to retire the email server while that first year is over. So now they're incorporated into our uh support contract. So I think a lot of here that don't increase, so probably just made me aware of that. The, the year has begun, so it's moving, moving to go in different direction, but so it's made it just.
You planned that for you?
I really did, cause I didn't get it till. It was supposed to be in the period. But it's another thing, right, there are more options for IT services, but I think Alan's municipal specific knowledge and experiences.
Time motion? Motion to make a second into other areas of town, administrative side contract, twin bridge services for contracted IT services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Overhand the word. But that's Alan, right, that I know.
Correct. Yeah, so you're talking about the head on the press. So I don't think, I don't think that's true.
Good, where, where is it? Where is the video? Is it in your office?
Right on your screen, but yeah, right, cause I watched it, right? And it's just a delay too, it's not too much of a delay, is it?
I don't know.
Pretty cool.
I watched, when you're gonna drive through.
I watched it for two days, I sat there for a popcorn and everything.
You did?
Yeah, I wanted to.
Did you talk to the lady, sir?
Yeah, we were on the speakerphone.
So if I haven't talked to Alan, but we probably wanna, you probably wanna wait until spring, but who would do the other ones?
What would be the next one, Mike, so would it be the one yet?
Probably, yeah, yeah. Next most travel and the next most problematic.
Right.
But he probably won't wait for warmer weather, so he's kind of. Would be worth the luggage, uh, backpacks.
Time to rush it. Why is hanging down?
What, what's our plan for this year, are we completing the bridges? Or we?
I think, but we have money to do the rest of them. I don't know, where's Slade's gonna mount higher, I don't know.
Completing the, the started the damage zone? It was, was it basically a test run?
No.
No, we just, we.
Well, you wanted to do the first, you did wanna do the first one, that's like a highlight, just to make sure it worked and. Case where many favors is improving all of once, so that part, yes, so.
I think we should keep, keep moving forward with them. If they're working.
Including Slade?
Including Slade.
I think that it's going in a good direction, I know all these pictures that are going up there, but people are getting calls now and stopping and going over, I think we're going in a. Good direction, don't you? I think it's slowing down the activities. I think it's a lot better than what we started, before we started.
That was a great idea, maybe maybe create with Eric McShaw, he's in the packs, but. Being repressed, and those are on there every year, it's like now, I look back and it hasn't done, you can spend a while, so.
What am I looking at, just to?
Cover of the annual report.
Oh.
It's a, it's a, it's a great bridge, Jimmy.
I didn't know that it's gonna see the, there's a squirrel in there, so. That's yeah. Great. Good choice, Mike, but that comes right.
Requested expenditure, design expenses related to Lower Winchester Street, West Swanton, the early project.
The last meeting we discussed that somewhat. Also made, but um letter from the city. Team, which was outlined as project costs, which is great, we were like, okay, what is this, running as well? We did confirm, yes, it is, they are looking for reimbursement for our share of the design expenses uh so far. Which at three percent of the twenty percent comes to a little under twenty-eight hundred bucks so far. And then another seventy-eight hundred expected through the rest of the time, which is a perfect progress. So where this is supposed to be our road-based fund for town roads, where this is the town road. Um, I think we invest NH, affordable housing grant is a good miscellaneous fund. The municipal transportation fund is a little bit, could be made, cause it is for sidewalks, uh largely for our private project and sidewalks, but. Uh, or the sidewalk fund, so I think there are, but I think this is a, some other option, I think this is the claims option. So it will be for, for that one year, about eleven thousand.
What's eleven?
For the, for the current invoice and the rest of it.
So this would approve the balance? The, the, the full ten-five, then six?
You should move second into authorizing strategy book two eleven. Plus two things.
Eleven thousand for design work associated with Lower Winchester Street Route Ten Relating Project on the NH. Earlier in the grant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
West Swanton Fifth District Development Plan.
So it's not in the email package, it's kind of down to the wire, but um included in here, it's about ten acres. You don't have to worry at all, but it all should be very familiar.
What page is that on, man?
Twenty-eight. Um, so I think, I think this is something we need to go with the hearing we have next week as part of the. Budget war hearing, hearings, so basically the development plan. Um, so I haven't, haven't did a lot of work on it, so I think send it to the student to review it, we started with theory, I have a question as far. Overall, I think it's pretty good, so as part of this process, we have to let the um school district and the county know about it, because the areas kind of. Keeping some revenue away from them for a little while, so I mentioned that Jeremy Raffburn um. Got it on Monday. Uh, other things, I mentioned this, he's generally aware that we never gonna copy this, you know, it's pretty noble.
Is that something that we just have to make them aware of, or do they have, they don't have no say?
They don't have to approve it, they can provide feedback, but.
We have to make them aware of it, because it cuts down my. And Billy, we did talk about extending that gas suck pack and, you know, we're gonna use it, cause we can, we can add later. We'll get it closed in tomorrow, but. Is that right?
Surprise me.
Sure, so I had to call it, uh, court, I don't. To go on the draft warrant, no major changes, a couple minors. Well, actually one kind of major issue, but um. So article twelve on here on page fifty-one. Good mentioning apples, we need it, that's what we do, um, since they have a downward period of water fund, just our surprise on the capital expenses and revenues. To lay issues to the drinking water, uh, being contingent with the funding for the purchase improvement system. The other break of the best is, there's a statute specific to acquiring water utilities, which I. Um, and those articles have huge specific kind of requirements, but. Have you out, so they have to be a two-thirds, so it raises the bar. And can be brought back for consideration for at least two years, um, so it's not like you keep bringing it back. So just, just something to be aware of there, so it's not complicated, I have two-thirds on here for. We both wanted to review the statute nineteen.
So which one is the two-third?
Part of the twelve. To basically acquire. Yeah, I don't know if it'll actually be, it might look differently next time you see it, but to. Adopt a water, except for water. Survive water. Or it's two-thirds, but.
Can you break that down for me a little better, John?
The higher threshold, so it needs to get like sixty-seven percent of the total.
Yeah, I understand that, so we just need to do that because we've stopped them nipping, yeah.
Yeah, just something specific to acquire water.
Article five is three-fifths, article twelve is two-thirds.
Right. Unless there's an investment, we're gonna have to kind of research and connect that, unless there's a way you can, I thought about. Come on, cover them both, you think, you thought we still had to have two, but um. Yeah, I know it's kind of. Weird. Having two different, ones with different thresholds.
So. So article five fails. We won't be till in twelve, right? If article five passes. And article twelve happens. Then what?
We have two years.
We can buy it.
Agreeing with.
We can buy it, right? Based on article five?
I believe you can check the, the finding range of the water, I don't know if we can buy it and not, not operate it, or?
That's what leads to the question.
What if twelve passes, what if five passes?
Well, why wouldn't, if, if article five passes, why wouldn't article twelve?
Could you move from sixty percent to sixty-seven?
Oh, yeah, makes sense, I think. Billy, that was a good question to.
I hope people understand how critical it is. Just for the people that are on the system. And remind the ones we wanna have.
Yeah, it goes through.
A lot of wells.
Lot of water.
No, a lot of wells, they don't have to drill.
Oh, yeah.
You know, somebody else could buy.
But who else are you suggesting if they're just? Demands, so what would happen?
In the meantime.
The other piece, of course, we didn't come through this highly, article fourteen, there was a pretty decent selection in the middle. If you want to make this shorter.
The exception shall, shall be granted.
Yeah. We'll probably make it shorter, cause a lot of this forgotten because we're, we're re-adopting it, so. Who want to shorten it, which I know usually we try to shorten it if we can. The fourteen is the commercial and industrial taxation. So it's the starting of the second sentence, they intend to be exemptions to provide incentives, et cetera, and then ending after. For a selectmen, for the, for the purpose of.
And you have to take all that out?
We could, so if you think it's awful, but I've been in there, we should keep it. If you wanna make it as short as we can.
I think we should take it up and put in the voting guide.
Make it to part of people understand we have it. And it's, hasn't been utilized all that much, but if, if we're able to kind, or the, that's seventy-two, or seventy-nine, sorry.
That one hasn't been utilized at all.
I thought seventy-nine he was here.
No, they were, they were awesome, they were this one.
Got a bit of exemptions and. Credits. That's basically your twenty-four, right? Or encompassing the tax rate.
Should be hurt, yeah, twenty-four. That one would be the tax rate, it's for twenty-fourteen.
Better shape than key.
The exemption capital of. And then one other, where you think we have a, uh, article fifteen. Which is the petition article about five selectmen, that language is prescribed, and we have a petition for that. It's got, we got set wording, so even though the petition said something somewhat different. Yeah, the amendment, oh. Um, got some.
So this doesn't, doesn't alter what the petition is, why, this is just language that's.
If you get, if you get, if the town receives a petition trying to amend. Uh, trying to change the number of selectmen in the statutes, other things as well, it will say. Um, one of the other petition articles, whether it has incorporation, I will, that's some idea of recommendation from the selectmen. Um, either now or before we buy, why is it more?
What type of work, recommendation?
In favor of the law. Has been appropriating the select orders, uh, into the. Is it recommenders? So like, the kind of selectmen is not a, not a dumping dollar.
We have to do either one?
Not, yeah, not the, not the five selectmen. But the.
Anything that you would consider the money is involved in sixteen, correct?
Is it before, after the budget hearing?
Do it.
Delivered.
Before delivery, it has to be on the board.
So that would be.
Then we, we also have the opportunity at delivery after the change. If there's a demonstrative change.
Correct, correct, we change your recommendations for the ballot.
We're going into, who needs to be an indicator. And then afterward, just like of all the other mighty articles.
Right. Always, like, it's cold.
For any need, there's two of the other. Have you ever, you might fall off, do you think? Um, I didn't, I don't want to go. But I worry, but on the budget, I did give you new printout. Dating snapshot.
Is it a cool idea, I think, to?
Yes. You don't have one, please, no.
Nice to meet you.
I don't know, Charles, sir.
Bye, Rich.
So, the warrant increases, which will probably be no surprise, but uh, DPW, primarily caving outside labor related, you know, additional position. Is about hundred forty thousand, I can give you the exact. Uh. Hundred forty thousand, police department, it's about a hundred thirty five thousand. Fire department, initial part time hours, seventy three thousand, insurance, which means there are three degrees of seventy thousand. And personal administration, which is kind of all the retirement. Uh, employee related costs of eighty two thousand. Uh, one thing I was discussing, Teresa, that can help. Think you gotta decrease the little bit, as next year is a fifty three caving period, week, year. But based on the vacant positions, and that they wage increases, don't completely fill the area here, it could cut back on fifty eight, sixty to seventy five thousand. For our department, so it'd probably be noticeable probably anywhere except maybe their personnel. Admin one, but. But like this, um, so with the, with the fringe benefits, probably about seventy five thousand. Down, did I say general assistance, general assistance is about sixty five.
You.
Sixty five, oh, which means. Twenty one, thirty one. Twenty one, thirty one. Yeah, sure. Most, I love the, the tone.
But some might have been related to the wetlands buffer that you wanted to make. Just for a round and then obviously you as there representative on the planning board.
Uh we just go over that stuff and uh I think they want to read it out to the town a little on the wetland side. I'll be back. Not much going on. How's the experience better with number of years? Is it something you'd like to continue or next year? What what are the reservations? But what what I talked with you, it seems like you've been interested in it.
I was, but I don't know. It's not what I was expecting. Like I said, there's a lot to learn that you you can't just, to me, you can't just go where they call it. I'm well aware of that.
But next year you'd be a veteran.
Oh, I yeah.
And you got a couple of months to think about.
Well, thank you for doing.
What do you got for Chad? Sure, um so good evening again, uh Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brand, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. And I've been asked to attend this evening's meeting to talk about um some of the wetlands. Some of the ramifications of the wetlands ordinance as it currently exists. Um for a number of my clients, but also I think in large part has an impact to the to the community. Um and I will say that generally speaking, you know, our firm is a multidisciplinary firm. We have um thirty two employees. All many of them, they all, many of them licensed professionals, soil scientists, weather consultants, civil engineers, surveyors. And so when we look at regulations, we try to do as objective as possible. There's always a goal and objective that the community is trying to um accomplish. And then there's balance with development. There always has to be a balance. And I think that currently um your your wetlands uh proposed wetlands ordinance has no bounds. Um it's, it doesn't really contemplate development at all across uh community. And what I mean by that is if you look at the way the ordinance is written. I think that I think there's a lot of good things and clearly a lot of hard work that's gone into the the material that's been put together, but I think it's missing some key components. That are that are really didn't have anything good of an impact on on development in this community. And I want to go over a number of those situations, but when you look at a wetlands ordinance, generally speaking, there's two ways that it can be established. It can be established in your zoning, or it can be established as a conditional use permit for the planning board. We're seeing a trend across the state where the wetlands are really um evaluated at a planning level because the planning board is looking at designs that are more advanced. And you can start to um look at more details to accomplish goals and objectives. Whether it's low impact development, um you know, different design features, et cetera. The ordinance says that currently exists, simply says it's a seventy five foot no disturbance buffer period. It says all wetlands. Period. It's the only exception it makes is to the or uh fourth order wetlands, which would be Swansea Lake, the rivers, Wilson Pond. It doesn't apply the most stringent conditions to the most high functioning, you know, wetlands in town, which is somewhat interesting. You know, it's kind of unconventional, but that's fine. What most wetland regulations will have in it are provisions. There's, you know, permitted uses and it'll list what's permitted. And then there's uses that would be permitted by special exception. And it would list a number of uses there. And then it would have uses that are absolutely unpermitted. Um like bulk storage of fuel, hazardous materials, things like that, um all restricted within a wetlands buffer. The special exception piece, if you're going to keep it in the zoning, is critical because that's where you would want to contemplate things like access to somebody's property. Right now, your regulation is written where it would restrict somebody the ability to access an isolated buildable area. So let's say there's a wetland along a roadway. This condition happens a lot in communities. That wetland needs to be crossed in order to access couple acres, fifty acres, hundred acres, whatever, you know, the property may be. Right now, your regulations don't contemplate that. It simply says that there's a seventy five foot buffer that's to be applied to all wetlands. When you think about that, it's actually a hundred and fifty feet, depending on where that wetland is situated. Because it's a seventy five foot buffer on one side, seventy five foot buffer on the other side. And that would require a variance. Variances generally are the hardest thing in permitting to obtain. You have to go before the zoning board. You have to, you have to make a case that it's not contrary to the spirit of the public, of of the spirit of the ordinance. That's a really hard test to argue when a town adopts a brand new order. Because the assumption is, is if the town adopts it, then this is what they're trying to stop. And so it's an unintended consequence. That's why normally you would see access under special exception, under a use that permitted by special exception. A special exception lists a completely different set of standards. And if you meet them, it's a permitted use by right as long as you meet these conditions. And so your, the ordinance as it's proposed is 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 void of that process. It's it it also is unclear how that's going to impact existing properties. Because it doesn't contemplate anything. It says all wetland buffers. It doesn't say all new development or how it's to be imposed on existing properties, and it limits mowing lawns. Um you know, there's a lot of people who have existing lawn areas that go within a seventy five foot buffer or a seventy five feet of a of a wetland area. That's a very onerous um regulation. Typically, vegetated area, as long as you're using, you know, no pesticides or anything like that, would be allowed. Um there's a lot of small lots in town that that could impose, you know, a real burden on. But what I wanted to show is, you know, this town adopted their last Tiff district was Safford Drive. And we've done a lot of development on Safford Drive as a company. Uh Brickstone's done, you know, a number of things and Jim Pepperd on on Safford Drive. Uh but recently, we've we've finally been able to do a few site plans out there. And then we have um John Flatley doing that residential project. None of these would have happened with this regulation, would not have happened at all. Um and I just want to point out, like, this is Safford Drive down here. This is the north side of the property, so you have um Route twelve would be up on this northern section. So Safford Drive goes by the Treasure Fairgrounds property starts here, just to give everybody some orientation. And you have Wilson Pond uh Road right here. We just secured, I shouldn't say just, it's almost been a year. We'll secure the contractor based storage facility approval on on this property on this north uh eastern section. If he doesn't, if he doesn't start foreign foundations or something soon, he's up for an extension, an approval extension. Does that happen if this new ordinance gets adopted? Because his buildable envelope here wouldn't even allow one of these buildings. Because your regulation doesn't allow any parking. It's very onerous. Most communities are are moving to a conditional use permit process before the planning board. They might have a non-disturbance buffer that's twenty, twenty-five feet, but you're allowed to do certain things outside of that. And the conditional use permit process is more like a special exception where it outlines the goals and objectives, which are important. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that a wetland ordinance isn't something that the community should be contemplating. But I think it's something that really needs to be reviewed in a lot more detail and and such. All of the yellow highlighted area here represents that seventy five foot buffer. So what does that mean? It basically means this, this plan would have never happened. And, you know, there would be maybe a really small building envelope there, and these aren't large buildings. You could have maybe one or two day contractor day facility here with the new ordinance. As you go down and work your way um west on Safford Drive, coming down this way, we have one buildable area here. But very restrictive. Uh there's not a lot of width here, and you can't do anything in the yellow anymore.
And you couldn't even get to it.
Can't get, then you can't get to this one. And then we're, I mean, we're currently, we're actively in the process of doing another commercial building here. And this regulation quite honestly jeopardizes this area from even being built. It's, it takes it right off the track. Um sadly, it's even worse on the other side. With Safford Drive. So you have a, you have a Tiff district in town that you have all the municipal utilities out here, but there's a potential to not, you know, we might be done on Safford Drive with this regulation. This leads the other side. We again did a, we did a site plan for gridiron construction here that's approved. Um there is a buildable envelope on this south side, but we would have had to cross this, you know, buffer area before. Um, you know, so that would still be buildable there. The, these areas here, these white areas here, those are forested wetlands. Like this area is is pretty wet through this section. But there's buildable area back here, and the only way to get there is coming across that wetland in a couple areas. And we look at that. We're actually, you know, we've, we're, we were going to start subdividing this and trying to make it more marketable for three or four commercial lots. Uh but this, this regulation really poses a great danger to, you know, to this property. Another property that we've been working on is Paul Thomas's property off of um Route twelve. We have all the existing conditions surveyed done. This is Arrow Crest Drive here. Got uh Twinkle Town Golf and Ice Cream Shop here. Um this is all commercial industrial property. He's got an existing parking lot here that goes inside the buffer. What happens to that? It's, it's kind of, how is somebody going to enforce that? Because you have to now take that area out. But all of this yellow is the area that he wouldn't be able to do anything with. It's gone in the regulation. It's it's a land taking, quite honestly. And I think it does put the town in a position of some liability, essentially. Um and we current, you can see the sponsor, we've had the sponsor done with Mr. Thomas for some time. He, you know, his busy season just ended. He came into our office and said, hey, I'd like to go forward with this plan finally. And now we have this regulation that's that's looming. And it takes everything that he was planning and and it really takes, puts it in jeopardy. So he was looking at a couple of commercial buildings out back. Um and this will be the active area where the parking would be. This is the the shed, the place that sells sheds currently is here. So that would be the buildable envelope on that piece, you know, if if this regulation passed. I just think that this regulation has a lot of unintended consequences. It doesn't mean that it can't exist, but I think it needs to exist with a conditional use permit process or a special exception process where somebody can say, hey, yeah, we want to go into the buffer and we're willing to advance the design. We're going to do infiltration, we're going to do advanced treatment. We're going to do, you know, some best management practices and try to balance those goals and objectives. Rather than just saying, no, it's off the table. And this regulation currently written says it's off the table. Uh and I think, you know, my clients have asked me to come before the select board because they frankly want the select board to write a letter not supporting this regulation to the planning board. Um because I think there's unintended consequences here that really need to be considered strongly. Um, you know, even, you know, this is just, you know, another, the the fire station we were working on. It's it's not severely impacted, but there's a wetland that goes down along the property line. This would be that seventy five foot buffer. Um, you know, technically, we wanted two to two access points. We'd have to modify, you know, that layout and work on that too. This discussion internally in our office has been happening over, you know, basically this week and a little bit of last week. When we started, you know, discussing this with a couple of our clients. I can assure you that that they were just smaller handful of, you know, free projects that we've been looking at in the community, but there will be much larger impacts. Um I can tell you, you know, we're looking at another gas station in town that's compromised, that has the potential to be compromised. Um there's development on uh Route twelve, excuse me, Route ten that we're, we were reviewing with people. And and when this happens, when regulations get posted, things get put on hold. You have to stop because we have to see how, you know, these, these are going to work out. And and nobody wants to be the first one in, so it has a real burden on local, local economics and in people going forward. Don't think the regulation is a bad idea. I just think it's being carried forward in the wrong format. And uh it's it's really important for us to share that. Um just, you know, we're, our office isn't in this community, but we live in this community. And, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, things are done right. Many of our clients, you know, have done, you know, own property, not only own property in town, but but Swansea in large part has done a lot of great things over the last few years. And I think this would be, you know, this would be kind of a a move in the wrong direction under the current format. So that's, that's what I have. I mean, I'm I'm not here looking for approval like I normally am. But I I certainly thank and hope that the board will consider a a letter of non-recommendation to the planning board. They're meeting tomorrow night. I can't attend that meeting, so I I told my clients I I could at least attend tonight's meeting. Uh I may have a re- another representative from our office go tomorrow evening, but uh to the planning board meeting. And it, and I, but the unfortunate part about this presentation is I really do think there's a lot of great ideas and concepts in the regulation. It's just, just not, doesn't offer good balance right. It's it's very much on a no development um standpoint. It doesn't contemplate options for people. You know, somebody wanted to build a building here, has to go before the zoning board for a variance. That's a, that's a hard burden if it's a new regulation. And we actually, we've, we've had, we've had a a couple unfortunate cases in this town when they adopted new regulations where board, zoning board members, like you just said, the presentation makes sense. But it's a new regulation, so how can you make the argument that it meets the spirit and impact the ordinance? It can't, in their mind. And it's, I understand that side of it, but, you know, regulations are not written for all properties. It's it's a, it's a paint, you know, broad brush, but you got to speak to individual sites. It's, I think it's worth considering. I hope you'll consider it. And I'm happy to answer any questions if the board may have any um relevant to this topic. I will say that when I read the summary of the regulation, it touches on a number of communities and saying that Swansea's the minority, but it's misleading. And, you know, for example, they burned up Keen. Keen has a seventy five foot buffer in their rural residential rural ag area. They do, it's a conditional use permit. And so we're allowed to work with that with the planning board. They also have a reduced buffer in their downtown district and industrial districts. Maybe Swansea should consider that rather than waiting out a Tiff district, which is what this would would do. You have all the utilities there, nobody will be able to use them. It's a, it would be a, and what I would consider unintended consequence. I don't think anybody's evaluated this section in town. Um, you know, Troy is the same thing, conditional use permit, GAFR, conditional use permit. They're all mentioned in here as they have a buffer. They do, but they have special exceptions or conditional use permit. Nobody has a regulation that I'm aware of that is, can't do anything in a buffer. They're open to liability at that point. I think there would be losses. It would happen if some, if the zoning board said no, that's the only option. And so it lines things up in the wrong direction, in my opinion.
Did you say you're going to send somebody tomorrow night?
I'm going to try to. It's kind of, it was a last minute request, and so I'm, I'm hoping to send one of our other engineers there, yes.
And they'll be able to do something similar.
Yeah, well, they're planning on having to bring this board and and present the same material. I may have one of my wetland scientists go, um, you know, and again, I mean, we're, I think there's good intentions. But unintended consequences, the way it's currently written, it really is, there needs to be some more thought put into how to balance development as well. And landowners' rights, it doesn't, could be anybody. You know, another driveway or an accessory dwelling unit. I mean, people are stuck with the problem, many people are stuck with the properties they have. And they don't even realize that that wetland is just inside the woods. You add seventy five feet to that, your whole lawn's a buffer. Can't put an addition on to a combination accessory dwelling unit. I think there's, there's just going to be a process for somebody to ask for relief that's not a variance.
Chad, uh back to the fire station that you're working on. Would that have, we have to do, would that add cost to that development of the fire station?
It would change the layout, so it would, you know, it could add cost. Or we'd have to do a retaining wall and have that cost. I mean, there's always, can you do something different? Maybe, but it it even redesigning that's possible.
What that, I said, we know that.
Yes, for sure. But we always have.
Bill, uh from your comments from last meeting, is that that leveling what he said? Oh, you okay? Am I reading that right from what you, how you felt last meeting?
Very similar, yeah.
Okay.
I I I backed off a few days later after I went through everything. And then I went back and read the the proposed amendments and fight back to what, what I was saying last week, which is much better said uh by Chad, but it wipes out Safford Drive. And and my point with Safford Drive was the town made an investment in Safford Drive. It made that investment in the late nineties. We can all argue whether that was a good place for an industrial park or not, but back then that was the decision. And that bond is about to be paid off, and as Chad mentioned, that bond put Safford Drive in, put the utilities in, and now we're done. And he, and that, and and the the proposal of Tom Van Olson's, that's a very unobtrusive project. It's whatever, it's three or four nine thousand square foot buildings that would be contractor based, totally unobtrusive. Wouldn't be able to be done. And and I'm the one that Chad referred to with regard to the new ordinance coming in. Because we we changed uh the density requirement in the business zone twice. And and Chad came.
I was trying to say.
But I I I said, how can we do this? It it it's reasonable, but but how could, how could the board find uh a rational reason for doing it when the town's just changed this density requirement? And that's the same situation that the zoning board would be in here. What what I would appreciate if you could just expound on the state re- recall uh regulations with regard, with regard to wetlands. Because it, that part was not really presented to us, and I'm not totally aware of of how the state is involved in protection of wetlands currently.
Sure, so the state does not have a wetland buffer. They, the state has just, well, I shouldn't say that, on any any wetlands that your ordinance would apply to, the state doesn't have a wetland buffer. They have jurisdiction over the wetland itself. And so, for example, we had a, we, we were looking at an eighty thousand square foot industrial bay building on the site this year. We were hoping it was going to go forward, but the water pressures didn't support the sprinkler system in that location. But we were going to fill this, this wetland peninsula to create, you know, this area. And the state has per processes for that, where if you fill over three thousand square feet of wetlands, you have to do mitigation. And so you either do onsite mitigation, or you do compensatory, or or you do an inlet fee where that money would be spent in the same watershed. Um and your current regulation was giving away of that because there would be a variance process required. And so what I mean by that is, many local regulations say if you're going to get a state permit for a wetland impact, it's allowed by special exception because you're going through a permitting process at the state that's going to evaluate the functions and values of that wetland system. Your regulation doesn't address that. Maybe the other thing that the state really gets involved in is shoreline protection, uh which is the fourth order um water bodies. So Swansea Lake, uh Wilson Pond, you know, the rivers. There's a two hundred and fifty foot um shoreline zone that is associated with those water bodies or those wetlands. The state has a fifty foot setback where you can't build any primary structures. But you can put an accessory structure within fifty feet. Your regulations exempts these high end water bodies and and defers that to the state. But the state's regulations are less stringent than your reg, than the regulations that you're proposing, which is seventy five feet, no impacts. So a perfect example is, you know, Swansea Lake. People are always, they have act, you know, water access down to the water. There's a path, there's often a lawn. There's, you know, maybe a patio down there. All of those are allowed within the fifty foot setback. The building, the house, the structure, the primary structure has to be setback fifty feet. You're right, the current proposal for the wetland regulation would be seventy five. So for whatever reason, the, your wetland regulation pulls back from those fourth order and says, hey, we're going to leave, we're going to leave this part up to the state of the shoreline permit. But you're applying a more stringent regulation to a less functioning wetland, a wetland with less functions and values. I mean, these wetlands on Safford Drive, there are some good ones. There's a couple ponds in there out in the woods and back. Um but most of them are just forested, you know, wetland where, you know, the the water's just been channelized a little bit. Some of them have been, you know, altered many, many, many years ago. Um and they're just, you know, kind of conduits from, you know, from the stormwater. We're applying a seventy five foot setback to that. You know, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, in some communities, you do a functions and values assessment on the wetland. And based on the function and value of the wetland, there are different setbacks that you apply. So if it's a burnout pool, very high functioning wetland, it's a hundred foot setback. But all other wetlands might be twenty five, fifty, and then there's a conditional use permit process. I think this is a, this is a very onerous regulation we've currently written. You know, I would say I've been doing designs in New Hampshire for twenty five plus years. This might be one of the more stringent regulations. Um, you know, that I could think of, all the site, town hallists, I think, is the only other one that might be more. It's actually not even worse than that. They have a special exception process in there. This year, they're moving it to a conditional use permit process, so I take that back.
I don't know if that answers your questions or probably. Chad, please try to get somebody there tomorrow at the planning board meeting so this information can be imparted so people have better understanding of what's going on. I think we should, I I really think on the Safford pack drive, we should use some common sense on on that. Since those lots have been there for a long time and try our best to uh get those developed.
I think that's what Chad was saying, that we need to propose to them and still contemplate that. The the contemplation that we objected, or I objected to was what Chad brought up is it's this concept that you can just go to the zoning board and get a variance. You can't just go to the zone and get a variance. Uh so it really puts a, I I think as Chad said, there's great intent. There's a great deal of knowledge and a lot of work that's been put into it. It just needs to go the next step. Uh and I think that's what Chad is is talking about. And we haven't even talked about, other than Chad, a couple of comments enforcement. How would, how would it be enforced? Just to gi- to give you the example of of what I used last week of my, my current house. Under this, I can't mow my lawn. Now, if I hadn't been here, I wouldn't know that. If I checked off the box and said, yeah, that that makes sense to me, and I keep mowing my lawn, and somebody doesn't like me, and they report me to the town, what what happens then? Or or my old house, where I, where I wouldn't have been able to build my garage. So I couldn't have built my garage because I already needed a permit, so.
No, that that's why I'm saying some common sense should be.
But it's not, it's not contemplated here.
I know.
So, but again, I think the emphasis, as Chad said, this is all good work. And it is something that we should embrace and try to work with. But we just need to to take it to the next step so that we don't lose a Safford Drive.
That, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I brought up King for a reason. I mean, nobody, I mean, King's not often an example I'll bring up in Swansea. But I will say, the downtown district, they have a thirty foot buffer requirement. If they're rural ag, they have it centered by. The reality is, is both of those are a conditional use permit. So we're doing a thirty-six unit development in King right now. And the conservation commission supports the impacts. And we're in front of the planning board getting, you know, we, we have wetland crossings, we have areas that we wanna get into the buffer. And then we have areas that we're giving more buffer where the wetland is more important and more, less, it hasn't been altered. And the conditional use permit process allows us to have that constructive dialogue with the community. Go on a sidewalk, we take a look at it, and we, we create a design for the property. It's not just, these are the regulations and they're applied to everybody. And so that's kind of a more common sense approach, and I think that's a good way to say it. The conditional use permit process allows the boards and the town to adjust designs to a piece of property, because every property is different, while still adhering to the goals and objectives of this ordinance. And I would strongly encourage that that's the process that Swansea considers. Um, I, you know, I've done a lot of projects in town over the years, and most, if not all of them, have had wells. You know, there's, it's a very, almost all of Route twelve, I think of all the properties. The wetlands is like right in the woods, back of these properties. You know, and, and I know there's other parcels that, you know, we work on concepts, and it takes people a long time to, you know, kind of generate the energy to go forward with something. Uh, but there's, you know, it does have, it does have a potential to have a negative impact on good development. I appreciate, you know, everybody's time, and I know my clients would appreciate some consideration if the select board can make a recommendation to the planning board that in, you know, maybe this regulation is good, but it's, it falls short in some areas and there needs to be more time, because that's in our opinion, very taxing. We hope that you consider that.
Do you have any specifics that that you would want the board to address? And that if it chose to move that direction?
Well, I think what's important for, you know, professionally is that the balance. Right? I do think that the regulation contemplates a lot of good ideas, but it doesn't contemplate a special exception process. It doesn't contemplate or a conditional use permit process, and so it stops development in its tracks. And that generally is not, it's an unintended consequence. Um, they focused on preservation and conservation, but haven't recognized you know, all of the conditions that could exist, and there's many. It's like we, we said, this existing site, you know, the existing set across the road, all of the approvals that this town has, has given that hasn't, hasn't reached the point of vesting. This, this regulation has the potential to impact, so it's not just development is coming forward. So I just think that that the regulation as it's drafted falls, it doesn't contemplate all the, you know, the circumstances and, and it has unintended consequences. And I think that's the terminology that I would recommend using, because the last thing they wanna do is you know, degrade anybody's efforts. I think there's a lot of good time put here, and, and many of these regulations can exist in their existing format, but there needs to be additional things. Um, like someone has to have the ability to access the property. The state, the state cannot deny a permit for access to this piece. It, it's illegal for the state to deny a permit for someone to access upland areas. The town probably should have regulations that acknowledge that as well. Please do not.
Still one comment, uh, and Chad, I'm on the conservation committee as well as the planning board, so you can see. And I appreciate you coming here. You, you make a lot of good points, a lot of valid points. You know, a lot of times leaving, certainly enough to the planning board has its own consequences, right? I mean, we're, we're supposed to be smart on everything, but usually this parcel right here, you have us. You know, I'm also president of the Wilson Pond Association. We do the water testing. The worst water we get comes down from a stream from this area. I don't know if it's coming from Homestead, fertilizer near lawn. I have no idea where it's coming from, but that's the worst water. And we don't know that. So in that process, if it was conditional permitting, you know, they're flooding the planning board, that really needs to be taken to heart, right? Because that needs to get mitigated somewhere along the way, as opposed to just putting some more stuff here that might be reaching or feeding into the wetlands that are coming down into that stream. Which stream's only this big, you know? But it's, it's the worst water that we get into Wilson Pond. Um, so you know, I'm not saying one way or the other, and people might think I'm, because I'm on conservation committee, I'm leaning one way or the other. I wa, I've been taking all the information in, and I've gotten reactions from, from this board as well as people in the town uh for me to process and consider, but I do appreciate you coming here and making those points. Um, it's, it's a shame we, those points weren't made prior to that amendment being ready.
Yeah, and we're happy, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, I mean, we have an office locally, we're happy to meet with the conservation commissioner, planning board, and talk about you know, the regulations and share ideas and concepts of where things can improve. I mean, I will say a lot of the sites that we design, we design things to meet state standards. Uh, alteration of terrain standards. So behind the alteration of terrain permit is a Clean Water Act certification. So if you're designing something to meet the qualitative and quantitative treatment practices that the state requires, that development will not typically have a negative impact on surrounding areas. A lot of communities are adopting those state standards on a local level from a design standpoint to try to address concerns that you're having. That, that could happen collectively as part of a conditional use permit, so if you're gonna, if you're looking to impact a buffer area, you have to design your stormwater practices to meet state standards. But you can do things like that. We see that, and that's kind of a transition in a, in a lot of communities, because I, I definitely don't discount the concerns. I think there's a lot of common goals and objectives. As a designer, we do that just because, you know, frankly, we can lean on those regulations and say, you know, when we have people speaking in opposition to a project, we can say, well, this is, you know, being designed to meet these standards, but technically in town, we don't have to design all projects to, you know, to meet those. So there's, there's a lot of places that the regulations can be improved. Um, you know, we just think it probably needs a little bit more time because of the unintended consequences here. At least I think, I mean, I'm assuming they're definitely unintended, because I, there's so many moving pieces with regulations that it's, it's hard to hit it. You know, get it right. You know, the first time.
Yeah, one of the other things, the point with agriculture as well as residential is the chemicals people use for the fields for the lawns, right? I mean, that's certainly dangerous to the watershed. It's a little bit surprised for the, you said, I think a thirty-foot pond for commercial industrial, I think you're talking about King. That surprises me because of the risk of industrial itself, you know? Um, so I, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's a balance and and maybe the conditional use permitting is a way to do it, special use. Uh, permitted use, I mean, you try to define as much as you can, but you, you don't ever seem to catch it all, right?
Yeah, and I think the, part of the critical thing that, that you look at is there's, it's balancing goals and objectives, right? So you have an area in town where you want more density because you have the infrastructure. It sometimes means that those areas require a little bit more design. So state standard design and stuff like that. And, and a lot of times in the commercial industrial areas, we're doing closed drainage, so we're capturing, we're bringing all the drainage internal, creating it before we're discharging it. So it's not that, that drainage or that stormwater is discharging only over a thirty-foot buffer. When it's discharged, it's clean. And so you just, the, the design intensity is, is, is the, the design practices are, are more elevated in those areas. And so, but the communities understand that this is where we want the development and where we've invested, you know, money in the past. And so it's, it's again, finding that balance. Um, but yeah, no, I don't, I don't doubt that. And a lot of those issues are coming off of the roads, you know, frankly, getting into the stream. Often where the problems lie.
That was a lot of information, Chad. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Good so much.
Thank you.
We'll catch you here in a while.
But that would become uh announced.
Or you and I.
That could information be on that.
Or information period.
Yeah, because you, did that change you at all in some of the doctrine?
Um.
I'm just curious.
Yes, I mean.
Because I tell you, it affected me by listening to that. I mean, I just wondered a few.
It came, you have to be very careful. If you don't, it's more than what X part came to type of statement about a penny. You can, or a bonus. That would be more than two months.
Oh, I, I think I've been very open, and I think it's, it's a lot of good work that's been done, and I, I think it does make sense for us to weigh in and uh just on behalf of the community. Utilize some of the landowners and Chad, which you would regard to uh continuing the process to bring in an opportunity for release, so it doesn't necessarily become a taking. I, I know with both of the projects or plans, but they know exactly what's gonna happen. The Safford Drive gets wiped off the map, and that's not gonna get hurt. And, and, and it doesn't need to be, because I think Chad is absolutely correct that there's, there's a tremendous amount of good work put into the effort and the spirit of, of protecting wetlands. It just needs further expansion uh to, to be able to bring in relief, whether it's a conditional use permit or a special exception, so that the, the town shows that they're contemplating uses. And I, I think it's, it's great work. I think it's an excellent start. I think they're forty to fifty percent there for where they need to be. And my hope is that the, the planning board will um, I don't know what the procedure is, but, but essentially withdraw their support for going on a warrant this year and make a concerted effort to work, bring in people like Chad and, and other land use consultants and attorneys and, and, and get a sense of what other communities are doing. Because I, I didn't have the data to be able to object to that page showing Dublin with X amount of feet, Richmond and Troy and and all that, but I knew King didn't have a seventy-five foot buffer that was black and white. I just didn't know what the remedy is, and, and Chad explained that. And, and I think we, we should, we should have something like that as well. So that, so that people have the opportunity. Doesn't mean they're gonna get it, but if they meet the criteria and it's, and it's a contemplated use, which is a good special exception, it just gives an extra, extra level of review, which would be the same you know, the traditional use permit. It, it's a contemplated use, but they still have to meet these conditions. If they mean, they get it. If they don't, they don't. Uh, I, so I the, the one comment I made to Sherry that, that I, I wish would have been able to have been done was that this was brought forward in October and I wish that they had understood that the same as the fire committee, fire station, that, that it was important to, to bring it to the board, to get feedback. And, and, and I understand they ran out of time, and so I'm, I just don't wanna come across as saying it wasn't, it doesn't have merit, because there's a lot of merit and has a lot of benefit. But my main, my main concern of this, if it goes through, is the fact that it shuts down development. People don't understand, and then we get into the same thing as we got into with the septic systems. Why are you a hundred and twenty-five feet when the state's seventy-five? I don't know. Why do you have seventy-five foot buffer when nobody else has a seventy-five foot non-disturbed buffer? I don't know, but that's what the people voted on. So this would give an opportunity if they took an additional year to expand on it and bring in other, other viewpoints and, and help output forth an amendment that, that really is workable and, and, and enforceable. You're always open to litigation. This, we know, is an open door to litigation. So I, I would support, right, drafting a paragraph to the, to the planning board.
I want to work with Mike a lot.
Sure.
You slide. I just, yeah, I think this is too vague to push too fast, because something was that. I mean, I think there's a lot to think about. I think this is a big thing that we need more time, more, more looking into. Like you said, just what you said, more exceptions and all this, and it's, it's a lot to this, to just wrote on it now. I think it should definitely be, that can get a lot more.
You've done great work.
I, I think it's a greater dare, and I'm all for conservation, but we gotta be reasonable there, we gotta you just can't push something like this to, it's gonna affect a lot of people, a lot of town, a lot of money. We're talking about a lot. I think it's a big air, a big situation. Um, I might recommend the same thing you have.
So you're gonna work with us on it?
I will.
Thank you. Good job, Slade, for it.
I think, I think, I think your idea is good, that uh by stemming in here, I think that also it may eliminate the potential to go on that extra step to the zoning board, you know what I mean?
Or if they did, it would be for a special exception, right?
Right.
So it would be a contemplated use, but, but additional review, like the conditional use permit for the planning board.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I did wanna just add one more piece. Part of the reason why the conditional use permit is so is is the path that we're seeing a lot of these projects, so our communities developing when it, when when it, um, pertains to um wetlands that are used inside of a, a buffer area is at a conditional use permit stage, you're seeing more design. So you see the grading, you see the stormwater management. At a zoning level, people are wondering whether they are turning, if this is a viable project or not. It's, and so you don't, you don't see enough details often at that stage. Whereas when you're going for a conditional use permit, you're working with the town planner. And normally that conditional use permit process involves a meeting in sight block sometimes with the conservation commission, and the conservation commission has an ability to to uh offer comments on a project. And so it's more, it's more interactive, and so it's, it's often not a no. It doesn't mean the conservation commission is gonna support the project, but it offers an ability for, you know, some given tape.
Yeah.
And that process is productive when it comes to, you know, we always, we, we make the case with our clients, you know, often on the backside of the project that the the, the project is often better at the end, you know, because it balances a lot of people's feedback. Um, but the zoning board process is black and white, and so there's no, there's no ability to have a conversation, to walk the site, to talk with the conservation commission, talk with the planner. And so I think that you know, communities that are pro-development, which Swansea has always come across being that way, you know, in my professional opinion, lean to that conditional use permit process, because it, it opens the door to dialogue. It doesn't mean it's going to be yes. But it, it allows for people to come in with their ideas and, and to, you know, to be more uh productive in the conversation. And it also allows the conservation commission to be more involved in the process. And so that's the direction that I would recommend, uh because that's the direction that most communities are going now, and I'd be happy to give a summary to communities that we deal with that have gone that way and are going that way, if that's helpful, and certainly we're happy to help if there's questions, you know, as this moves forward, but so, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chad.
Adam, the town planner who said in the Zoom chat.
Adam, the town planner just said in the Zoom chat, informational colon, Swansea does not have a conditional use permit process yet.
It, it's something that, that Chad is suggesting would be a method to adopt. Have you been talking with Adam or Stefan about that or?
I have not. I, I was going to reach out to them to talk to them about it, but that's a planning process, so that can be adopted by the planning board and often that doesn't even have to go, you know, before the town for a warrant.
I agree with the regulations.
Yeah, because it's a change in the regulations.
Does that go through public hearing?
It does go through a public.
I think it would, but, but it, that's a process that, that can be, you know, can, can be worked. Um, I just think it's a, it's, it's a more productive um, and pro-development, you know, process, but I, I do plan on talking with Adam about it and I'll, I'll, I'll try to do that tomorrow. Yes, Gary. Adam said he wants to change it in twenty twenty five and he's gonna present it to the planning board early this year.
Thanks, Adam.
That will impact these are the two things we've been targeting coming up. Because we realize too, I haven't talked with Adam, that we need to get ahead like, like we're saying. We need to start early in the process instead of late in the process, so these things can be ironed out. Because it's always, when you try to write a regulation, we don't, what it is now. If you do it late, then it's all these calls pick up and people get mad. So if you get a high amount then, and you could even have some, uh, not necessarily public hearings, because they're gonna be done at the end of the year. But you can have informational meetings with people about this, that's non-public by public. By the way, all of our, all of our meetings are public meetings, not always public hearings, but public meetings. Except where we meet both executive or legal issues like you guys do. That has only happened twice that I can think of, I guess. So we would be willing to work with the commission on that. You've always told us that. In fact, we changed one of our procedures to say we want conservation commission to weigh in on a project and give us comments before we even hear it. So that we have in the process.
Good idea.
We do. And you do, yes. And then, and then it's permission is just a very valuable.
Now, there's only nine development invited to the tournament, so I found that my term expires. And then after.
For all the regions.
You're a hold, holdover. Serve until someone else is appointed, so. Automatic three new years now.
A lost stop, you used to call it in the military. You think you're getting out and then, no, you're not.
Automatic rain must be, it must be trouble you.
What do you think there, young fella?
To me, how, how are the people supposed to get to those little pieces of property from the road? What are they gonna spend to get there? That's my, my victim. You know, you, you want them to use this piece of property. What's it gonna cost just to get to?
Might not get the mission, you'd have to get.
That's true.
That's a part of the, it's a part of the, uh, the process that they go through to determine if it's economically feasible.
Three hundred and seventy some wetlands in Swansea?
Yeah, that were, were identified in that. That were identified in that report, but, but his point was the amendment does, does not uh, tie back to that three seventy four. The amendment is wetlands.
Right.
So you got a wetland on your side of the property, I suspect. Where you got all your knotweed, that doesn't usually just grow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, if that's determined to be a wetland, then you can't pull much of your own.
I don't, it's pulled out then.
Well, that's, that's your method, but somebody else might feel differently. By the way, so.
See that, I get crashed by a car coming around at like sixty miles an hour.
Or you get that too? That's fine. But now that I have this new roof, it, it's really interesting to try to drive the speed limit with, with people, especially going from thirty to twenty or going from the forty to the thirty.
On thirty two.
Yeah, it's thirty two.
That's a racetrack.
I would even go by Mark's house on, on Lakefront. There's been more that they wanna make that a speedway.
But when that knotweed is growing by my house, you can't see who's coming south. And last summer, I almost got killed twice because I start to pull out and all of a sudden, where did you come from?
That stuff is hardly erratic too.
Doesn't seem to like, you know.
I gotta save this. I, I just would, would ask if you consider what, what we discussed and, you know, Jim and Slade and I and, and our desire that, that this be continued through and and looking out for the twenty six warrant, just so that some of these issues that were brought up could be, could be contemplated in, in development. Just ask you to consider it when, when you're at the public hearing tomorrow night.
Hey, Bill, I see him twice a week over at his place of, uh, employment, so I, I can, I can chew on his ear all day.
Twice a week?
You know, I'd like to see Chad.
Great. One more bite of the public input apple before we go on a non-public?
Um, at, at town hall, I, I noticed the back wall has been replaced at all. Yeah, uh, who, who did that?
Santa. Santa.
Yeah, okay.
You mean the driveway or the fire station part?
Yeah, the wall there, the. Yeah, the one that's broken, that's nice now.
Well, we did it, we did it when we get the front. We figured why we had equipment there and everything. But then we saved some money by doing that at the same time.
Now, was that, uh, was that part of the fifty four then or is that a little bit more than that?
I think it was a separate, it was, uh, ended up being a little bit more, or it was around ten thousand.
Ten, so we're about sixty four where we were at?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. How much, how much you got left in that expenditure?
Uh, on that expenditure?
No, 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 on the expendable trust. How much is left in that?
I don't have that handy, but we will have that at the budget here.
Okay, just maybe need to put some more back into that.
The fire station one is pretty good. It's, it's a pretty good amount. The town hall one, I think it's pretty well depleted.
Maybe you do. Put some of that back.
We still wanna do the back stairs, the back door. Eventually.
Yeah, we'll get you close on the key pad system.
Right, key pad system. It came up beautiful. Nice job, everybody did. We stopped the water problem by Jimmy Matt. We dug down and fixed the foundation.
Well, that river, that, that river that was running underneath it, that's been.
We failed all that when they dug it all up, which that was another thing that we conquered. Wall, everything came out clear, right?
Now, those of the, uh, of the front entrance, we put a roof on it, gotta put some, uh, some drains on those, uh, you know, like around the rest of the building.
I think they're gonna have to put a few that is, but I think I'm talking about the town, uh, guys doing the shingles on that and saving some money too, right? We were just gonna shingle it over, you know? Joe mentioned that he would help us with that, which is gonna be great.
Yeah, the rain diverters or.
Yeah, yeah, so they divert.
Yeah, one of them's gonna go right in the ram.
Yeah.
But even the inside of the town hall, the doors, have you been in it and seen the new comments and the floor over the base?
He comes to the town hall twice a week or so.
No, but that came all nice and that was our guys that did that. That was our guys that did that, which was, it was nice. Yeah, they came in and they, and they saved us a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm retired. I've been tested, go around, working on my stuff.
No, that's right. I mean, it's not practicing to do that. We had the guys to do it and we had the time, so we did it. It really did rip out the town.
Good job.
We were just discussing that in last meeting.
Don't do it under. A B for hierarchy.
Yeah, that's here for public. I'm gonna make the motion, we go into non-public and, uh, B.
B for hierarchy.
B for hierarchy.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Mark, where you going? The bachelor?